Okay, welcome everyone for today's special meeting, Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, four P M. Real call please.
Mayor Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Pocham Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garsta.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio.
Present.
Please rise for the flags, Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Okay, so we just, we have consideration and necessary action authorizing legal services pertaining to provisions of city attorney services. Staff recommends adopting resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash thirty-two expressly authorizing legal services. And this is, this is the assignment, right? Sir? Okay, the one that I had been asking at the last meeting, if there was going to be an assignment, your answer should have been, yes, there's going to be an assignment. But obviously you didn't want to be honest. The other thing, the other thing I wanted, I asked you back then as well, is that if you actually had provided services for Selma. And my understanding is that you did, because I have a court document here that you lost a case for Selma. An employee case that they filed a lawsuit that cost them several years that they have to pay back on lost wages. And.
Neil, can we get a point of order, Neil?
No.
I don't think this is part of the.
It does pertain to this, Diego, just because you want to, you want to.
We do need a point of order here.
No, I don't know if that's.
I can speak, you're not going to stop me, Diego. You don't want me to be transparent, that's what, what it is, because you're hiding this.
We're not, we're not trying to.
Well, then don't, then stop. Council does not stop me. He can't stop me either, even if he's sitting there. I run this floor, and this is pertaining to this subject, so I have a right to speak on his services. Because this also has to do with his service. Learn, okay, you need to go back to training. So again, you lost a case, an employee that filed a lawsuit against the city of Selma. That you, they appealed, you appealed and also lost. This was settled in two thousand and twenty-three. So this is what we are asking for you to represent the city of Parlier when I've been saying, we have a four million dollar lawsuit, and you're going to represent us, right? Yeah, and if we ever have to settle, or we lose a case, those that voted in favor of that, just remember, people, who did this to the city of Parlier?
Remember who voted on it.
Remember who voted, and Kathy is all in favor of that.
But I changed my mind on that, when they didn't give me the proof. I changed my mind on it.
Okay, let's move on that. Is there anybody in the council that would like to say anything on this item? Any from the public?
There's no public comments on here.
It's an item that's agendized, you have to give them a moment to speak when it's agendized, Janie. Again, training.
I'm just a little concerned because we're in the middle of this trial, and I don't understand what's the rush. Why can't we wait until it's over? And then talk about it?
Exactly.
I, I don't understand. What's the rush right now?
Obviously, it's an agenda.
Mayor, I'd like the opportunity.
Sure, go right here. I also want to address some other things.
First, I need to point out that I was not provided with notice of this agenda at all.
No, you did not.
Not provided with the resolution to review. You don't have any staff report, no one knows.
No.
How this resolution came about.
Right.
At least, I don't.
I don't either.
Your city manager is required by ordinance to faithfully observe all contracts entered into by the city. He's also charged with the obligation to enforce all laws, including city ordinance. My contract requires that I be given notice of every agenda that gets published. My contract requires that I review every resolution, or draft every resolution, and review every agenda. And my contract simply mimics what's set out, set out in the government code. Government Code four-one-eight-zero-two says the city attorney shall frame all ordinances and resolutions required by the legislative body, the city council. Four-one-eight-zero-one provides the city attorney shall advise all city officials in all legal matters pertaining to city business. That would include reviewing your agenda for legal sufficiency, reviewing all of the resolutions for legal issues, and approving all that. Only the city council can appoint and is in control of the city attorney by statute, Government Code section three-six-five-zero-five. Statutes relating to what the city manager can and cannot do mimic what is in your ordinances because your ordinances were adopted by and large in nineteen seventy-nine, and they require, the statute requires you to set out in those ordinances, in order to have a city manager form of government, requires you to detail in those ordinances, all of the powers and duties of your city manager. And we have those ordinances, they are ordinance number six-twelve, adopted in nineteen seventy-nine, and chapter two-point-one-oh of your municipal code. The city manager cannot by statute appoint or control a city attorney, that's Government Code section three-four-eight-five-six. The city manager has no authority whatsoever to disregard my contract and either assume that function himself, or farm that out to someone else. He is required to faithfully observe all obligations imposed on the city by virtue of a contract. And the obligations imposed on the city are to allow me to perform my function as detailed in that agreement. When he does what he did, causing this agenda to be published without going through the city attorney for approval of that agenda, without allowing the city attorney to review the resolution, he's breaching the agreement, he's exposing you to liability. All of that appears in section two-point-one-oh, point oh-four-oh of your, your municipal code. He has no authority to act contrary to an ordinance. In fact, he's required to enforce all laws, including your ordinances. By publishing this agenda, in direct derogation of your ordinances, he has breached the contract, and he is acting in excess of his authority. An act in excess of authority, or in violation of law by a public official, is void. It's meaningless, it's as if it didn't happen. And you cannot build your, your resolutions, ordinances, whatever you have, your agenda, based on the unauthorized and illegal activities of your acting city manager. Because that will cause the resulting action taken by this council to be subject to attack and to be void as well. You're a, you're a general law city, you're not a, you're not a charter city. You're a general law city, and general law cities have to comply with all laws, period. And to the extent they don't, they are, their, their actions are void.
Exactly.
As with a public official. You're a city council of five people, and you're required to act as a body. You have certain powers that are possessed by you and only by you. One of those is the power to contract. The other is the power to appropriate and spend money. You can look in vain for anything in your ordinances relating to your city manager that give the city manager any authority whatsoever to enter into a contract or to spend money.
Right.
As he wishes. Everything's got to be appropriated by you. Incidentally, you, you don't have a budget.
Correct.
And it's beyond June thirtieth.
Exactly.
And we're having a special meeting to do this.
Right.
When you don't even have authority at this point to spend money, period.
And that's one of the things that I was going to bring up, because.
And that, that is the acting city manager's duty, it's right in the ordinances.
We've had how many special meetings, and I've been asking about this budget since the beginning of the year? I've asked about a budget workshop, nothing. And we asked about, when was the budget going to be completed? We were told by Daryl, when he presented here to the council, that it was around the corner, and he was almost going to be done with that. We haven't done that. We are not in compliance with the state, because there is no budget. We have not approved a budget, and yet we're still spending money. There's checks that were approved. And we really shouldn't even approve them, but the only reason why I'm okay with it, because it's not the fault of the people that are having to be paid that we don't pay them. You can't, you can't do payroll, you can't do, pay out the invoices that are submitted, because there is no budget. Absolutely no budget. We have four people, one that was just recently hired, we had another temp, and then we had the one from Ryan Jolly's office, that's three, we have one staff member that's a manager for the finance department, four individuals, and we still can't get a budget. No one's done a budget. We're already, July tenth, passed.
It, it is clear, from the public record of the four special agendas issued by the three councilmen, that the, the chief, the acting city manager, is taking direction or instruction from one or more city council members.
From outside of the council meeting.
A council meeting.
It was never discussed.
That is.
It was never discussed in closed session, that I can guarantee you, never once. Your assignment, nothing, because you never responded to my answers, when my questions, when I asked you about the assignment. You just kept reflecting back to three, that council approved your contract, council approved your contract. Yeah, but what's the assignment? Special counsel requires an assignment, and here we are working backwards, trying to get the special assignment approved, when it should have been done in advance. Because we've done this before with other council, and we, and we've never done it this way.
Your ordinances, including ordinance number six-twelve, which modified, were adopted in nineteen seventy-nine. Some of them have been updated, but your ordinances are required to be as they are by virtue of the statute which enabled you to adopt a city manager, city council form of government. And that ordinance very clearly states that a city manager shall not take direct directions or instructions from individual council persons outside of a meeting, and he should only do it.
During a meeting.
During a properly noticed, agended meeting.
And that it's agendized, correct.
That, that provision is, has been consistently violated.
Yes, that's why I'm asking about the resolution, so I think Serta went ahead and did this resolution without council direction from a actual agendized item on a council meeting, or in closed session, because we never had that discussion. So I don't know how we came about with this resolution, with this.
Well, that, that provision, that provision, ordinance number six-twelve, is a non-amendable ordinance. You're required to have that in place. Otherwise, you can't act with a city manager. You cannot have that form of government without that ordinance. And it's there, because allowing a city manager to take direction or instruction from one or more council persons outside the context of a meeting, lessens and interferes with the right that each of you have to represent your constituents. And it interferes with the democratic process by making one council person more powerful than all of the others, and lessening or interfering with the rights of the others to represent the people who elected them.
Yes.
It, it's a, it's a perversion of the democratic process. That's why you were required to adopt that ordinance when you became a city manager, city council form of government.
What's happening here is that they're trying to change the, the process here, that's what's, what's happening, it's, it's never been done. The ten years that I've been here, and I'm sure that even previous council that's been here even longer before, I'm sure they, they know that it's never been done like this, so, but. I mean, it's, it's a different mentality, and it's a different, I guess, way that they want to run things here in Parlier. And instead of focusing on the positive and moving the city forward, like the steady budget, we're still back to, how many times have we been going through this with, since last year? Yep, yes, there was a budget, she came in in, in December, and in March, we approved a budget. Just because you don't like her, Kathy, don't mean that she didn't do her job. We are here throughout this whole inten, like, we're, what, July, and no budget? At all.
Your, your agenda here is backwards.
It's been done backwards.
It's backwards. The discharge item in closed session, clearly pertains to the city attorney, because you have the appointment of an interim city attorney immediately following that. The discharge item is a clear admission and acknowledgement that the same item.
I'm sorry, Neil, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, we're on number one, correct?
Yes, we are.
One thing I wanted to mention is that I remember you stating, sir, that Neil had the conflict of interest. But the one that actually has the conflict of interest is you, sir. You know why? Because you don't have the contract, he does. You want his contract, so there is a personal gain for this contract to go to you, so the conflict of interest is you.
The, the discharge item is a clear acknowledgement and admission that the same item that appeared on the June thirteen agenda.
So Neil, is that going back to number one on the agenda, or?
It's still the resolution, yes.
They're interrelated, aren't they?
Yes, they're all connected, it doesn't matter, they're just trying to find a way to.
I'll, I'll, I'll demonstrate to you exactly how they're interrelated, okay?
Yes, he's the attorney.
Excuse me, Neil, let me ask you a question, when you were sitting there and Lozano Smith was here, were you sitting there for a conflict of interest?
He applied, and he had.
There she goes interrupting, so you guys won't hear.
Just like everybody else.
Okay, okay, let me, let me tell you again, when you were sitting in the audience there, and, and Lozano Smith was her attorney, she wanted you here, but she had you in the audience, she didn't point that you were in a conflict of interest to sit there and gain for you.
She didn't have a contract, he applied. The problem here is that you guys are sweeping it under the rug and trying to sneak it in there. They're trying to sneak it in there on top, he's, he's still currently here.
Then you're over here all of a sudden, how's that?
Here.
That was a conflict of interest for you, like you're saying about that gentleman.
And your contract you guys approved was a special. As a special counsel, no, because that's Kathy, she's a radical.
You, you don't really have any idea what conflict of interest is, Kathy, so.
But he knows you like that.
I would suggest that you not speak on that topic until you know what a conflict of interest is.
She doesn't know, she just is speculating, as usual. You just don't want the people to hear. That's the difference.
As I was saying.
It's actually helping.
Appearance of the same item on this agenda is an admission that the June thirteen special agenda item, which was the same item, the action taken on that was invalid and ineffective.
Yes.
Otherwise, why in the world?
We're back here again.
Would you put it back on the agenda, if the, if the action ta- Would you put it back on the agenda? If the, if the action taken on June thirteen were valid and effective, then you would just, uh.
Left it.
Move on, right?
Right.
So the, the dismissal item on your agenda can only be there to cure or correct the invalidity and ineffectiveness of the prior June thirteen action. And the rule is a public entity cannot cure or correct an invalid or ineffective action without thoroughly reconsidering the prior action at a properly noticed public meeting. Not merely ratified at a public meeting. There are numerous cases which state that rule, including most recently Julian Fire Company versus Julian Fire Protection District, which is a twenty twenty-one case. Sixty-two Calat Fifth, five thirty-three, AP six oh one. That's the rule they state. That's the rule you will find in numerous published decisions. By the way, everything I'm telling you about what the law is and what the rules are, you already have the legal authority for, because I provided it to you. Except that. The attorney general issues opinions as well. And the attorney general has interpreted the cure or correction of an invalid or ineffective action as being akin to putting toothpaste back into the tube. According to the cases, according to the attorney general, what has to occur? To correct or cure, the city council must rescind the prior action taken and then begin the process entirely anew. And proceed with that process in the proper manner. If the council were to take item on the action, that is, the, uh, closed session dismissal item, that would also be invalid and ineffective because the original action is invalid and effective and it can't be cured other than by putting the toothpaste back into the tube. Many, many decisions deal with that precise problem. You can't just ratify an invalid action. It's invalid forever and ever. You can never build on an invalid action taken by a city council. That's the item on the closed session and what follows it is, would be equally ineffective and invalid because it depends on the validity of the action taken on the dismissal item. You can't have two different, uh, city attorneys because city attorneys are, are any attorney is required to exercise independent judgment and you can't do that if you have another attorney with whom you're not formally associated performing legal services on the same topic. So both attorneys would be violating the ethical rules and we can't do that.
Right.
The, the resolution, item one, is a quasi-attempt to cure or correct the invalid actions of June ten and June thirteen, but it's really a very transparent effort to give effect to the invalid actions of June ten and June thirteen by transferring to the special council the function of the city attorney and breaking the, violating the contract and violating the law and the process. And it is a totally invalid resolution. The agreement referred to in the resolution is a framework agreement. It basically says that, uh, we'll provide you with legal services relating specifically to employment relations matters only on request. The contract doesn't even exist. It's not a contract. There's no, there's no, uh, attorney-client relationship under that contract and no, uh, unless it entail a request for the type of service offered is made by the city council. And it has to be made by the city council because the city council is the only one who has the authority to enter into a contract. Save and except for the contracts that your city manager is authorized to enter into, which are by and large contracts of employment because he has the power to hire employees that are his subordinates. The city manager has no power delegated to him in, in accordance with any statute by the city council, uh, which provides him with any such authority. And in fact, the, the power to enter into contracts, the power to appropriate money, the power to spend money is all vested in the city council. You can find nothing that provides that authority to your city manager. And the city council cannot delegate its power to contract, its power to appropriate and spend money to the executive or administrative branch of city government. You have case law on that because I provided that to you as well. And any attempt to do so results, number one, in an illegal contract. Because if you delegate away your powers, that makes an illegal contract because you don't have that authority. Your power to contract, your power to appropriate money is a public trust that you're required to act, exercise as a city council and not otherwise. You, you can look in vain for anything that would authorize uh, the city manager to do anything with respect to any contract or to spend money at will. You're not allowed to delegate to that administrative branch the power to appropriate money or to enter into contracts particularly when that contract is with an attorney providing city attorney services because the statutes specifically provide. That's something the city council does and not otherwise. With respect to making contracts, you, you can in some cases delegate authority, but you've got to provide that authority with specific structure, standards and limitations on exac- on its exercise, just as you have done with his authority to contract by hiring people. You have a personnel ordinance that says precisely what he can and can't do. You have personnel rules that say exactly what he can and can't do and which divide power accordingly among him and you. You have nothing like that in this particular resolution. General law cities are required to act in conformity with all laws, including its own ordinances, and if they don't do that, the actions they take are void. Same thing with any public officer. Acts by a city council or by a city official that violate an ordinance or a law are void and they're subject to be nullified by a court in response to a petition for writ of mandate. Cities that, uh, have obligations under contracts have the same obligations as any individual that has a contract, but with a twist. An individual who breaches a contract gets sued for damages. A city can be compelled by court order to perform the contract as written. Your resolution that's proposed here is an impermissible uh, delegation of authority without standards or limits. It is a resolution that will give rise to an illegal contract. And the resolution impermissibly attempts to give effect to the invalid prior action and is not a valid effort to cure or correct the prior invalid action. So it too will be subject to being set aside by a court. You have no staff report, you have no, uh, report from the acting city manager as to how this all came about. All you have is a resolution which completely rewrites that special council agreement that you approved on June, June seventeenth and materially changes any prior request for services that was approved by this council. The resolution essentially says, well, it does say, the city council expressly authorizes the attorney services under the agreement, that's the special council agreement, include consulting, representation and legal services pertaining to the provision of city attorney services and the city attorney's agreements with me. That is as vague, ambiguous and uncertain as it can possibly be. I can't tell, cuz I wasn't involved in it, whether it's intentionally vague, uncertain and ambiguous or whether it's just an example of poor draftsmanship. I think it's the former. Because it's clear from your acting city manager's prior acts of disregarding the existence of my contract, that this is intended to be used transfer all of the duties that I perform under that contract and thereby by in-run giving effect to the invalid.
Which is a conflict.
Terminations. And so it will be just as invalid as the original. More so, the city manager is given carte blanche authority to determine what is representation or legal services pertaining to the provision of city attorney services. Because the resolution states the city manager has authority to take any and all action necessary to facilitate the legal services. Again, I don't know if that's just intentionally vague or whether it's poor draftsmanship. I think it's the former. Simply because of what your acting city manager has been doing, which is essentially ignoring the fact that you have a city attorney. Not providing, uh, the city attorney with anything to, to review and that would be an impermissible delegation of authority without standards and without limits. So, you know, make no mistake about it, Serta will take the position uh, that he can use this, uh, this resolution to do anything that is, uh, assigned to the city attorney to take that and to transfer it. And in the process, he will breach the agreement and he will be engaged in a very illegal and nefarious action of giving validity to your invalid actions. And that resolution will necessarily be voided by court order if it's adopted. He's already, he's already done that, so there's every reason to believe that he will continue to do that.
My question is, Serta, when did you work on this resolution? Because we never discussed it. So when did you put this together, that resolution? Yeah, but who, why weren't we discussing that? You just take it upon yourself and work on it or whatever you want on there? Or it's supposed to be us giving you directives of what we want you to have on the resolution? We never discussed it. Like I said, we never discussed it in closed session. We never discussed it in open session. As a matter of fact, I had this attorney here refusing to answer the question about what his special assignment was cuz he would, kept going back to, I have a contract the council approved. But that still didn't tell me what the assignment was. So the discussion was never discussed about the, uh, resolution or what the assignment would be. So you just decided to work on it on your own?
You, you asked for a resolution, ma'am?
Yeah, but what was.
Provided you with the, as you requested.
That was your resolution. Did you ever, did you ever discuss that with council on, in a council meeting with council? Or just separate council on the side, talking to them on the side and not, because it was never brought up here. It was never in closed session. It was never in open session. So when were these discussions ever taken? Because it was never discussed.
I went based off of your request for a resolution.
A resolution, but the, I said, well, I asked about what the assignment would be.
So that's what's in the resolution.
But why aren't you not letting us know? You're just doing, that's what, you're doing your own assignment, which you wanna see.
I'm sorry, as of the June twenty-sixth meeting, we, we knew what, what the assignment was gonna be.
I didn't know what the assignment would be.
It was discussed.
When was it discussed?
On June twenty-sixth.
With who? On open, in an open meeting?
That, that's correct. That's correct.
But it's, there was no assignment.
It was discussed in closed session.
Okay, but you, you are the one who told us, yes, we can do this, this, X, Y, Z.
You, it was.
We did have.
Go back and look at what you assigned, okay?
I don't recall this assignment at all.
I'm not allowed to speak it.
No, you guys worked on it on your own. This is what it sounds like to me. Because I do know that Janie and Kathy always come to the, uh, city hall
But I asked.
And meet with chief, every time.
Nobody's gonna be quiet for you to talk. So, I, I mean, if you're gonna talk and everybody's gonna listen, then let's hear it.
My recollection is that it was, you wanted the ability to consult.
Consult, yes. Consult.
Give advice or guidance.
Exactly.
Relative.
You said guidance, Sabrina.
And city business.
Yes, it's even a live stream. You said guidance. You wanted guidance. That's not what's on here.
Doing. And if you agree with me that that was the assignment.
Yes, it was. Guidance.
What he's doing is he's bastardizing the assignment, changing it entirely by inserting in there a nonsensical sentence that the special council can now. that the special counsel can now provide
Guidance.
Any form of legal service or representation or consultation with respect to anything that pertains to the provision of city attorney services. I don't know what that means. I don't think he knows what that means. It's intentionally vague. And it's intentionally vague because what he intends to do is take everything away from the city attorney, reach the contract, and transfer that to the special counsel. That's what he intends to do.
No, it's not. That was in live stream and open session. No, it was. It was brought up.
It was brought up that it wasn't to take over the city attorney.
Right.
That, that's my understanding. So what, it does, I mean, I'm reading it. Again, everybody has their interpretations of things.
Say right here, what does it say right here on the bottom?
Consulting, representation, and legal services, that's the assignment. No, 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 I'm, I'm looking at the, the resolution.
Have an interim, interim city attorney then?
But we're on number one. We're on number one.
Because it all is all connected, okay?
Discussing closed session with regular session.
Okay, that's an assumption for you, then you need to process it a little bit better.
Can I answer it?
Well, I, I'm just saying, I, I think, I, I believe we're on number one, the resolution. Where, this is my interpretation of the number one on the resolution, and it is what we talked about. Yes, this pertaining to provision of city attorney services, okay, it is what we talked about. But again,
And it's not written right.
We're bringing up on what's in closed session.
Who wrote it?
We're just talking about the resolution.
Right, we're talking about the resolution, so.
Who wrote it?
The problem I have with the resolution.
Serta, you wrote the resolution?
Says, the legal services to be provided are consultation, representation, legal services.
Pertaining.
Pertaining to the provision of city attorney services. Okay? You can take that phrase and you can interpret that phrase
Who wrote it?
Literally, anywhere you want.
Right, I, I, I understand.
Did you write the, did you write this resolution, Serta?
Authority to do that.
No, did you put this together?
What he's gonna do.
So you, you wrote it?
But that's your assumption, just like all the assumptions, just like all the assumptions up here. Just like all the assumptions up here, that's your assumption, but I, I'm reading this, th- this way. So I, I mean, that's what we talked about, we wanted somebody to consult with, the, the council, somebody to consult with to ask clarity.
I'm back to the same question.
So I, I have something.
Add to that
Who wrote the resolution?
You add to that the term representation.
Did you put that together?
Yes.
You wrote the resolution, yes or no?
Quite a bit.
Instead of ignoring me?
You could, you could take that phrase.
Serta?
Because that phrase is nebulous as hell.
That means yes? Okay, you wrote it.
And he could run with that.
Resolution.
And say, okay, great, I've got, I've got the authority to take everything away from the city attorney, whether it's assigned him already, whether it's assigned to him by contract, and transfer that over. And my assumption is, that is what he will do, because that's what he's doing now.
Exactly. Actions, his actions, his actions. No, and, and this is why, this is why we don't get anywhere, because I ask questions, not even this attorney here is very transparent, because the last time I asked questions and he refused to answer, so this is what we're gonna have. He was terminated from Salma for a reason.
If you want, if you want.
Who was terminated? Neil from Salma?
No.
Was he, were you terminated, Neil, from Salma?
No, but he was, it was because three council members did it for the same reason that you guys have personal feelings, the three council members in Salma got rid of him because of their personal feelings.
Saying that he is fired. Did they fire you, Neil? Answer the question.
Attorneys they went through in Salma, seven, seven attorneys because of their personal feelings. And I don't work about personal feelings, Kathy, because you just don't, like you said it many, many times. From Salma also. You said you want an attorney that's gonna cater to you. That is, that's why when you, I asked the question, you
She wants an attorney to cater for her.
Live stream, and you told him not to answer, not to answer my question, and that's exactly what he did. So there you go, he's working for the three.
Stop it, other people live stream know what you're about already.
The city of Parler. He's working for three individuals that want him to work for them. I've been constantly told by Diego that we are the majority. We are gonna make the decisions. It doesn't matter what I have to say, if I have an opinion or would like to see different. This is why the people need to see this, because this is who you voted for.
This is who you voted for, when she had her, her yes ma'am, they did what she wanted, they didn't do what I and Sabrina wanted, they did what she wanted. And you did what she wanted.
Nope.
Why don't we get back to the
No, it's not, you've been saying it all along, ever since you were elected.
Resolution you got. You eliminate the third whereas entirely. That third whereas is the thing that delegates authority. And it not only delegates authority over the contract, it delegates authority over the attorney, which he can't have. He can't be in charge of an attorney providing you legal services. So if you eliminate that delegation of authority, which is illegal by the way, and makes, renders it an illegal contract. Illegal contracts are void.
So, so, okay, let's let it happen.
There, there's thousands of cases of this where the city delegates its undelegatable obligations, duties, powers to a party under a contract. The courts have consistently held, those are illegal contracts, and illegal contracts are as if they don't exist. So if you take out the unlawful delegation, you take out the phrase representation and legal service pertaining to city attorney serv- provision of city attorney services, what that leaves you with, I believe, is what you approved in closed session.
Yes, your assumption.
And I have no problem with that.
But, but the thing is, is here it doesn't say that, that's why I asked, Serta, if he wrote it.
Is that delegation of authority. You can't have a delegation of authority for having your city manager control
No.
An attorney, whether it's a city attorney, whether it's an outside attorney providing services.
There's laws that prohibit.
You can't do it, the attorney can't do it.
So, so, when I get to that, I will open it up. I'm not there yet. So
But the term, the terms, representation and legal service, those have specific meanings in law. And what you approved in closed session was consultation to receive advice and guidance relative to me.
It was actually said in open session as well.
Fine.
Guidance, that's not what this states. Read it, please.
If you adopt that resolution as is, you will be turning the existing contract into an illegal contract. And you will be altering severely your, your instruction or requests or assignment that was provided by the unanimous council. And you will be altering it in such a way if you leave everything in the hands of your city manager.
Yes, no.
In a manner that allows him to effectively give effect to the invalid June thirteen action. And a court looking at that will simply say, well, this is just an invalid attempt to cure or correct the invalid prior action. And so it's also invalid, because you didn't go back and put the toothpaste back in the tube and start over again. Which is what you're required to do by virtue of many, 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 many cases out there. So, so, somebody trying to set this thing aside, all they gotta do is show them the resolution.
He's the attorney.
It's, it's invalid on and we still haven't gotten any answer
Oh my goodness.
How anybody came up with that, that language.
Well, Serta said that he wrote it.
You, you don't have any anything.
And yeah, there is no staff report, and
And, and you're not getting it out of your, your acting city manager either.
No.
Which is bizarre, frankly.
Thank you. So then, the language needs to change, and it needs to be what we voted on, which is the guidance. So that doesn't say that in this resolution, that's not what we voted on, and that's not what we approved.
This, this resolution would be fine if you strike the third whereas. If you strike.
So, can we approve?
Hold on.
Yeah, approve and amend it.
You strike, city attorney that, I'm sorry. It says, the city council expressly authorizes that the attorney services under the agreement include consulting, you strike the word, representation and legal service pertaining to the provision of city attorney services. And the word and so that it reads, the agreement include consulting.
Okay.
And I would insert the word relating to the city's agreements with Neil Costanzo and Costanzo and Associates. Which is pretty much the same thing as saying consultation relating to the city attorney. Because that's what that is.
That's what it is, yeah. And that's what was approved.
And that, that's the only way you can make that that resolution conform to what you actually did.
Yes.
As opposed to some secret desire of somebody who we don't even know and is not being disclosed.
No.
And it, it's just, you know.
That's what I don't like, is this not, not being transparent.
So, so
Yeah, you're so transparent, huh, Diego? Tell me about that.
The third whereas, um it is understandable only because it says delegates to the city manager, he's not the city manager, he's the interim or acting acting city manager. Again, I'm not an attorney, but I, I'm trying to read this, like, yeah. Authority to take any and all action necessary to facilitate the legal services. My understanding is to facilitate legal services regarding this resolution regarding the assignment, which is, which is the city, the, the consulting, guidance and related to, right, take out that other legal service pertaining, take that out, striking what you're saying, related to the city agreements with Neil Costanzo and Associates and city business, we did agree on city business.
It's still, the, the point is that it's guidance.
Instruction was.
Right.
Or your request was. So of course I agree to that, yes.
It's just the wording was
It, it, it's just, you know, you, you
This would have been preventable.
The way it is written.
Make sure the language was on there. But it was never sent to Neil. It was, I just saw it today.
Intentionally
On the agenda, because it was yesterday.
Okay, so
Special meetings are for urgent matters.
Can we, can I motion?
To amend it?
Yeah. Can I motion to amend, we're striking the third whereas and, and taking
Don Bertha, please, go ahead.
And taking off, so it should read the number one. The city council expressly authorizes that the attorney services under the agreement include consulting and guidance
Yes.
Related to the city, the city's agreements with Neil Costanzo and Costanzo and Associates and city business.
Yes, absolutely.
See
That, that would be a valid
That would have been preventable if it would have received this resolution, but it didn't get sent to him. And urgent matters are the only ones that go on special meetings, and here we are again, all these special meetings, which this is not an urgent matter. Our urgent matter would have been our budget, but that's not on here.
Um, so I, I motioned to amend, yeah, taking off.
That's what was approved. That actually was what was approved. Okay.
I motioned.
It was already approved that way. In closed session it was.
I motioned for
It was approved.
Striking out the third whereas and striking out the, where it said, on number one, where it says representation, all the way to the and but including, inserting consulting and guidance related to the city attorney's agreement with Neil Costanzo and city business.
Because that's what we, that's what we agreed on.
Yes.
That's exactly what was approved. That's why it's important to make sure that you that Serta sends it to our attorney to make sure that it's correct.
So that I motioned that res-
Second.
She can motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Yes, to approve the resolution as amended.
Second. Okay, and if not, then we're, we don't have this item that was never approved, so you can't really approve this because it was never, that's why I was saying this was never discussed, this resolution here. Well, if not, then we have to bring it back, because you have to have a dis- yes, because we never I'm, I, I'm not saying, just relax, okay? Relax. I know you're a little bit upset, but I'm sorry, but that's what, what was, that was what was approved. We, that's what we approved, so. Read it to him again, please.
So, number one, the city council expressly authorizes that the attorney services under the agreement include consulting and guidance related to the city's agreements with Neil Costanzo and Costanzo and Associates and city business. Number one. No, right, right here, that one's gonna come up.
That's the one we're on.
What, where, what do you mean? The, the whereas, right, the third one? And then on the number one, from representation, all the way to the and at the snake, at the, the third line. Yeah, I'll, go ahead, he's reading, so go ahead.
But you, you have to, your second whereas includes the same language that's in paragraph one? So you would just make the same changes to that second whereas as you're making the paragraph one?
No, I, I just, I'm just trying to read it.
No, I, I just, I'm just trying to read it, making sure I understand it myself, because I don't follow any.
And, well, it was explained several times. So, is there any questions? Go ahead. It's public comments on agenda items. You have to have public comments.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, uh, stay too much, but it was a total dysfunction from one end to the other. Which is, you weren't put there for that. You're put there on a leadership ability. And thank you, Ms. Sabrina, for bringing that out, that, reading what you had. And I did hear you say that it went in open session, you wanted somebody to consult with. I have a question, uh, how much money are you guys gonna delegate? On a nonforeseen budget right now?
We don't have a budget.
I, I understand that, because I've asked for the budget and other times. Because I've also stood here and said, you're hiring without knowing what the budget is. Your pockets could be empty. Uh, it's, I don't know if you're. I'm not gonna get it, that's another day, but, uh, that's another question needs to be answered, but not now. So my question is, how much are you gonna delegate so you guys can have conferences? To make sure your, your, your understanding of city ordinances or brown acts? And I've stated it before, I did have legal counsel. Your stipend would help to pay, to have legal counsel. It cost me a hundred and fifty dollars for half an hour.
He's saying pay for it out of your own pocket.
I'm listening, but certain things only get to a certain level of thinking for certain people. And so that's what my point is, you don't have a budget. It's not yours, it's ours. And when you're doing all this, you, you're disrespecting the seat you hold and you're disrespecting everybody that's here. Because we don't deserve this. Your outburst, your mm-hmm. We don't deserve it. We're, we're, we don't deserve any of it.
Very true.
I'm not here pointing the finger. I'm going from one end to the other. And that's, that's very disrespectful.
Yeah.
That makes it difficult. It makes it difficult. To go ahead and render your, to do your jobs. You've been here two years just about. I haven't heard one word of anything that's moving forward that you're bringing. Outside of Ms. Molina going to economic, uh, meetings with Leanne and those people up there from Fresno County. I used to go to, to me it's a waste of time, because they're supposed to be representing us at Las Vegas, San Diego. They're supposed to put up a booth with information about every city they represent. I was there, they were never there. They've never brought, nothing to part of there. I know we were paying, back then we were paying five thousand dollars a year. I wanted to get out of that. I even told the council, we should get out, what are we paying them for? We spend our money better on us to go out and sell the city, because we'll do a better job. I'm still waiting for the guy that's, that's gonna come back and tell us what our dreams were, from Dallas? Who's got paid from a grant? Nobody's asking about that. He got, he flew in second class, flew out first class with the money, our money. It was a grant. But it wasn't spent wisely. I guess you guys don't remember that. I do. And that's, those are the things that, I just want to express, I, I have very bad feelings. I said, who wants to be part of this? I mean, everywhere we go, oh my God, everybody's looking at this. So, you know, I guess we all love parlor, but only to a certain point. We need you to go beyond that. Beyond, beyond your hatred, your disrespect for each other and work for us. Think of what we need. You know, we used to have, uh, Mexican consul here to help our people. I say my people. Uh, they needed paperwork done, because they came from across the border, they're migrants, whatever. But they needed help. And we used to have them here once a week. That doesn't happen anymore. You know, that, those are the services you guys should be fighting for. Those are the arguments I wanna hear. Not a who said, she said. That gives nothing. It goes nowhere. Thank you, Mr. Conson, Conson, that was very well put. And, uh, yes, the council does have, as you put it, because I was a council. And we receive, uh, some kind of recommendations by a city manager on which way to, which way to move. You know, but you had somebody else out here at one meeting, the other attorney, and questions were asked and they were evaded. You should ask your question. I, I don't see why they couldn't answer them. But I would say this, why is there being, not being answered? That's a question I would like to hear, or answers. That's all I have to say. Uh, it was interesting. Forgive me, I'm too bright with this shirt, but put your sunglasses on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Harry Nunn? So do we have a, we have a motion and a second? I second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
She's not answering. So she, well, I didn't hear you answer. Did, was that a yes or a no? No, I'm asking you. We, we did a roll call vote. Well, nodding, it doesn't, does, doesn't, doesn't work. You have to answer for it to be on the record. So nodding doesn't work. Go that to another meeting and I'm sure they'll tell you the same. So I guess she nodded yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so now we can move on to the next item. And that's closed session. Anybody here would like to talk on anything about the closed session item? Harry Nunn? We're gonna go into closed session. Thank you.
Fernando. Fernando. We're on open session, please. Thank you. Go ahead. Yes. Is your mic? I'm sorry.
Back in closed session. We have one reportable action under Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. The City Council voted four to one to terminate City Attorney Services with Costanzan Associates. Other direction given to staff.
No.
Councilmember Molina?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we need to worry about our $4 million lawsuit. Thank you.